Call this meeting to order on October third, two thousand twenty-two, and we'd ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please proceed. We'll now turn your attention to item number three, public input, and I believe that Mr. Bernard Kinsey is here to address the council. Please come up, Mr. Kinsey, and go ahead and speak.
Thank you very much. I would like to say greetings to the new council members and some of our former council members and our new mayor. Okay, now that I got that out of the way, what I'm here about today is the switching of the electric meters to a newer type. I thought this was stopped back in twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen or twenty-sixteen with the information I had. I went through Jerry, our former clerk, and when she got through that, the information I sent her, whoever she talked to, I got a call in forty-eight hours, they said it's stopped, they're not gonna do it. My wife and I moved here and settled in November twenty-thirteen. Approximately twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, I got a notification from a friend of mine who we worked together for years and lives in Las Vegas. Nevada, excuse me, a little nervous. So anyhow, what he said is that electric meter with the rest of the town. His utility bill went up by three hundred percent. Some of the other neighbors was a little lower than three hundred percent, some was a little higher than three hundred percent. I lived in Phoenix, Arizona at the time, got a notification from my power company that they wanted to upgrade the electric meters. And the same thing started happening with people, higher bills, much higher bills. I talked to a councilman that I lived in his district. He put his head together with several other councilmen, what they did is enacted legislation that you could godfather your meter in. The only time it will be replaced is if something goes totally wrong. This seemed to appease a lot of people. I contacted other people by computer and I found out Ohio and Pennsylvania were doing the same thing and had the same problems, extreme high utility bills. So one day my wife and I were going to the store, there were two gentlemen from the city, very nice and polite, and they had a meter in their hand, I asked them not to do anything to my meter at the present time. I passed the information to Jerry when she was the city clerk. I had emails and everything else, but after I was called and said, "We're not gonna do it", I didn't need that much information from X number of years ago on my computer, so I deleted them. So I have nothing except my testimony to bring to the council. In talking with an individual, I did not know if that's the same company nationwide that's providing all these new meters. If it is, they're wrong, they've got a big problem on their hands, and I don't think they corrected it to date. I would like to see the installation stopped at the present time and have an investigation into it. If you have friends out of state, you've just had this happen, find out if their bills went up or not. Because this is a town of maturity, people are, a lot of them are on fixed incomes, they're not gonna be able to afford a thirty, three-hundred percent increase. So I thank you for your time, if you have any questions of me, please feel free to ask right now while I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsey, my understanding is that you had an appointment with Chris Lindholm, and then that got canceled, but trying to be rescheduled.
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay, great, well, we appreciate that, and appreciate you being here this evening, and we'll look forward to information that he gathers from me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I don't mean to insult the new installers that come around. One of them, I can't remember his name, he's a very tall gentleman, always wears a cowboy hat, and I went outside with the cat one night in the backyard, something hadn't said yet, and I'm looking at my electric line in the backyard, it's dangling about three feet off the ground. So I quickly called nine-one-one, we had very good response by the fire department. Two bumpers, a brush fighting unit, and an ambulance was on scene along with the patrol car. So they basically sealed me off, I was told over the phone, don't let anybody within three hundred feet, and I says, "Don't worry, I can yell loud, because I'm not going anywhere that way." And disconnected from the house, and this gentleman came back into the city, got his ladder and went up and just put a new fitting on, and we're set till today.
Good to hear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kinsey. Are there others who wish to speak in the public input? Seeing no further persons wishing to address the council, we'll move to item number four. Do not believe there are any amendments, or are there any amendments?
There are no amendments.
No amendments to the agenda this evening, we will move to item number five, mayor's report, and I am just very pleased to announce that Andrea Swisher, who is our prosecuting attorney here in Linsburg, has been named to the twenty-eighth judicial district by Governor Kelly, and this is an exciting opportunity for her, and it is a wonderful reflection on Linsburg. So although we will hate that she leaves as our prosecuting attorney, we think it's a wonderful deal for her family and for our city, so congratulations to Andrea and the Swisher family, and we look forward to hearing good things for that, so. Okay, and we will move now to item number six, the consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening, it has three items. Item A is the approval minutes for the regular meeting September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and the regular meeting for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The item B is payable ordinance, fifty-three eighty-four, and item C is the purchase order ordinance, fifty-three eighty-five. These items are routine, they will be enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. So with that, council, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, I'll have your roll call vote.
Councilmembers Presley?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vanderwee?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion passes. And we will now move to item number seven, which are appointments. Madam Administrator, do we have any appointments this evening?
Not this evening, mayor.
Thank you. Item number eight, planning and zoning report, and we would call on Jordan Perkovich, our community development director. Welcome.
Mayor, attending council, planning and zoning commission, as well as the design review board, held a joint meeting on September twenty-seventh at six P M. Two items for address primarily, the first was an application for rezon in four sixteen South Kansas Street. That was recommended for approval to council to amend the zoning on that property from R one to R three with a mobile home overlay. That will be presented at the next council meeting in the form of an ordinance. The second thing that was discussed are the appearance guidelines for downtown C two retail business district, as well as Harrison Cole C three general business district. Most of this conversation centered around the downtown appearance guidelines and specifically the design review board's role in reviewing exterior modification revisions. So basically, that was kind of an open discussion to see about, you know, to talk about the history of this topic, and if you can recall from the past, I told you that design review board reviews signage and also exterior modifications downtown. In COVID, talks about referring to appearance guidelines to help make those decisions, but council has never actually adopted a set of appearance guidelines, so this would be sort of remedying that, that oversight. In the process, they sort of preliminarily established a timeline for addressing the appearance guidelines and ultimately to recommend a policy revision to council. So the timeline right now as it stands, so the first would be from starting in October, we'll be sending out an initial set of basically public outreach, just asking for feedback and input from affected stakeholders, those stakeholders being downtown property owners, downtown businesses, and also downtown residents. Once they come, once they receive that feedback, at the end of October during that meeting, they'll review it, they'll discuss the feedback and then give suggestions moving forward. After that, a first draft of the appearance guidelines will be written. That will then be reviewed in November and then sent out again for a second round of public feedback from the same stakeholder group. December, there won't be a meeting, January, they would review all of that public feedback. Of course, all of those meetings are open to the public. And then talk about discussions for revision. A second version, a second draft of these appearance guidelines would be written after January. In February, they would review the feedback, that was sent out again, and then discuss that revisions, another round of revision, ultimately getting to the final and third version of the draft. So there will be three opportunities for public comment from stakeholders, and then at the end of May, hopefully, when the final draft is written, they'll be able to recommend something to council to adopt by reference. So that's what was discussed on September twenty-second.
Thank you, Jordan, questions for Jordan from the city council? Seeing no questions, thank you, Jordan. Next item on the business is old business, item number nine, and it is the mobile food vending policy, item A. Council, what we're going to have is Jordan come back up and give us an overview. He has, because of your direction, has brought a couple new possibilities for you to consider along in conjunction with the city administrator and the city attorney, and so they've worked long and hard on this, and we appreciate it. We're going to have him come up and ask, then I'll have you ask him any questions, and then when you finish the questions, we'll have him sit back down, and then we'll have a discussion in the city council. And so I'd ask if you can, let's get out your questions for Jordan, all done at one time, so I think, he didn't ask me for that, but I think he would appreciate that, so. We will call on you, Jordan, you're coming back up and speak regarding the mobile food vending policy.
All right, good evening again. So the community development department is presenting three options which address public input from the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting, and direction from city council at the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting regarding the mobile food vending policy manual version one point oh act. First thing is, one of the things that we talked about last time were the legal questions, that. I'll defer to Zach, and he will answer that directly, but I'll present the three options available, and these were the ones that were kind of discussed generally, without any definitive direction as to which council preferred. Basically, I'm just offering them up all as options for you all to consider. So option number one is ordinance five-three-eight-eight, which would adopt the mobile food vending policy manual version two point oh by reference. This ordinance would include a map that would open the three parking spots south of Farley's Bar and Grill in the orange zone, so this is stall oh-four dash three. The map amendment would allow all food vendors to locate in that stall south of Farley's. The second option is ordinance five-three-eight-nine, adopting mobile food vending policy manual version two point oh. This ordinance would open, would include a map that would open parking spots in front of all established brick and mortar restaurants. So not just the stall next to Farley's, but all of the stalls that are in front of all of the established food businesses downtown. The map amendment would allow all food vendors to locate in front of all established brick and mortar restaurants. And then the third option is ordinance five-three-four-nine, which is the one that's currently on the books. That option would just remain in effect as established and allow the mobile food vending pilot program to continue through March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. This would allow the planning and zoning commission and city council to fully consider all collected feedback and data through the duration of the pilot program before adopting version two point oh of the policy manual based on that feedback. So the recommendation from SAK and from community development is a motion addressing one of these options that's presented.
Jordan, was there any specific reason why on the two new ordinances that you extended that for the entire year through July seventh? Is that?
So the original, the original ordinance runs the pilot program for sixteen months after the day of adoption. So basically, it's sixteen months, at twelve months, we review the feedback, and then that gives a four-month window to revise the mobile food vending policy manual and then adopt a new one. So it's just standing in line with the sixteen months that was originally adopted in March, on March seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Six, the sixteen months, so, but of course, if the council chose to go with the existing ordinance, it would remain March, which I think you said March.
So the pilot program runs through March, but the ordinance doesn't expire until July.
Okay, makes sense.
So that way, that way, three vendors can still bend, but then there's a four-month review window, if that makes sense.
Okay, all right, thank you. And Zach, do you have anything you want to specifically address, or you can just take questions?
Sure, yeah, it might be kind of helpful for me to set the stage as council considers this. Essentially, at the last council meeting, there were two potential legal issues that were brought up. One was the existing case law out there that would suggest some potential for litigation. The second issue was whether or not this amendment itself would be a violation of our own ordinance. So going in reverse order, it would not be a violation of our own ordinance. To make this amendment, the ordinance prescribes one way, one timeframe that council can make these changes, namely, at the end of the pilot program period, but they can, you can use other ways as well to make those amendments. Whether or not council wants to do that, that's a policy decision, but in terms of the ordinance, that's not restricted. Now regarding the case law, which again was intended primarily to see if this was something that would open the city up to some kind of liability, and after talking with Jordan a little bit more, I believe his point with that was essentially that whatever the risk to the city is, it's not zero. And that is true, this has been challenged in other places, but my concern is very, very low because, for numerous reasons, but essentially, none of the ones that I could find were in our jurisdiction, whether local or appellate, and the other ones that were challenged used different law, but and the constitutional challenges that they were bringing were somewhat on the less likely to succeed side, and were essentially attempts to get this passed for the sake of a certain business, as the case may be. But the point being that the concern for us is very low, there's no issues locally with this, and most of the cases I was reading either were lost or resolved on other grounds, like the issue became moot because council changed it. But the important thing is, the options that Jordan has laid out are perfectly listed, and I have no more concern with these than any other ordinary action, council.
Thank you, Zach. Council, questions for Jordan or Zach? Or comments you want to make to each other? We'll discuss it once we, once they're done, of course.
My apologies, mayor, for being late. One quick question, those are three ordinance options, but would a fourth option be that we just terminate the pilot project now instead of six, or six months or however many months?
It's written in the policy manual that the city can terminate the mobile food vending pilot program with a two-week notice for any reason or no reason at all.
So that could be the fourth option.
Sure.
Further questions?
Were any other, did any other individual approach you or ask any other questions or bring any challenges about this topic during the time that we first discussed it in September?
Having received any more feedback. I received one more point of feedback from a downtown business owner, who said that they would like no food trucks downtown at any time whatsoever outside of special events.
That was my expectation, I also received that.
I did as well.
A point of clarity, they can only be adjacent to an existing brick and mortar restaurant. They can't set in front of any other business.
No, no, so the way that the map is set up now is that you can be adjacent to any other business, but not directly in front of an established brick and mortar restaurant. So it sets out a few spots downtown, as well as like handicap parking spots, and some others that would be non-code compliant or non-policy compliant, so.
Prior to this pilot program, was the ordinance, or our ordinance book silent on the issue of food trucks? So there just wasn't any guidance, so we didn't know if it's legal, not legal? Is that where we were before that all started?
Correct, yeah, so that's my understanding, is that there was no regulation around food trucks, and so the reason why planning and zoning was addressing this in the first place was because there was, there was no legal way to operate in the public driveway as a mobile food vendor.
So let's, if you, oh, so if we were to terminate, I'm just hypothetical here, not recommending it at this point, I'm just asking. The, if we terminate the pilot project, then we'd be back to nothing, right? There'd be no reference to?
Yeah, that's, that's my sense of answer, and so if you terminated the pilot program because there would be no additional policy on the books, it would, yeah, it would eliminate all guidance and regulation for mobile food.
And if that were to happen, are there any other means to allow a food truck to, let's say, be parked there in front of Farley's? Like a special, any special permits, or is there any other way to allow that to happen outside of having a food truck?
Outside of blocking off the street, no.
Further questions, council? Or Zach?
Well, if you go with option two, and that allows a vendor in front of any brick and mortar restaurant, so if I'm a vendor, I can say I want to come and park in front of any restaurant, and there's nothing that restaurant owner can say in regards to that, or?
That's correct.
I think this can wait till, well, maybe it'd be a good question. I'll pose a question to Jordan. The problem we have is because, again, it's city, it's city property we're talking about, it's not the business owner's property, it's city property, public property, that's what makes this tricky, right?
Yeah, we're talking about parking in the public driveway, so this isn't, this isn't a private property issue, it's a public property issue.
And to do that, they need to communicate with the city and purchase a permit, and then they can park on public property.
Yeah, so during the, yes, they need to get a permit, but they don't need to purchase a permit during the pilot program, so the permit fees are waived in exchange for data. So basically, the only thing that they have, they have to do to comply with the terms of the permit is just submit feedback. That way, we can review it at the end of the pilot program and make adjustments as needed and necessary.
Out of curiosity, you know, we talked about food trucks and stuff like that, but I know in several towns I've been to before, in situations, I've seen where a place like, for example, the Stude would have a trailer there for barbecuing, pit barbecue or something out front. Would that still qualify under this program, or does it have to be a completely self-contained?
Under this program, it would need to be completely self-contained.
So it'd have to have like, for example, it has to have its own way of driving, or is it just a trailer, or, I mean?
So this, this is specifically dealing with food trucks, not trailers, so this, this doesn't actually outline any revision for like a trailer situation like you're talking about.
But where do we define the difference between like something like that and say the one that was parked out there not too long ago that was literally a bumper pole trailer that we've already had out here?
Which one are you talking about?
They had some Indian types food, it was kind of like one of those.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about. Well, I suppose it's defined in the terms in the front of policy manuals, so that is actually where we define it, but in that case, yeah, it was a trailer, but it was a self-contained unit with a serving window, I guess. So that's probably where the difference lies.
But that would be considered a food truck?
Yes.
The trailer?
Yep.
Councilmember Presley?
If we were to adopt one or two, either of those options, where does the permit fee come into play then? Do we need an amendment to establish a permit fee? Is that established through your offices, or, you know, what happens there?
So it's, the only thing that this amendment would do is amend the map, so the rest of the policy remains the same. So for the remainder of the pilot program, there's still no permit fee, and then after that, I believe it goes to a hundred dollars per year for a permit fee in the policy manual, but again, that's the point of reviewing and revising after the pilot program.
So if I may follow up, so would that mean then we would continue to collect data as it is already established in the current ordinance?
Yes, yeah, it's still, it would still be the same, the exact same policy except for the map.
Except for the map, okay, thank you.
So I did have one other question, because I know in talking to Farley's a little bit, what if they were just omitted from being considered a restaurant? As far as he was concerned, he was perfectly okay not being, not being on this no-compete list and not even being considered part of that, and then anyone could park in front of his place, including him, if he wanted to.
Yeah, so that is option one to consider, and that's a policy decision.
Okay, so that option one isn't allowing, you know, that spot to be there while there's, it's actually taking him off of the list of businesses?
Well, there's not necessarily a list of businesses, what it's doing is, it's just, it's opening up the parking outside of this business that he currently can't park in front of.
Okay, because he's a restaurant, and we're opening it up because we're gonna consider that he's not a restaurant, he's wherever he wants to be.
Well, it's not that they, they just drew the map and put those blocks in front of restaurants, not, I mean, not classified it as a restaurant.
Okay, okay.
On option number two, if we were just to eliminate the no parking zones in front of all the restaurants, that's two, right? Option two?
Yep.
Has there been any discussion with all the other restaurants to be impacted to see what they think of that at all? I haven't heard from anybody.
Since last council meeting, no.
How about you four? Has anyone, any of the restaurants in the affected district that we're talking about, anyone?
Again, I think.
Had a conversation?
Again, I would just like to bring up that I believe that the conversation happened before this started, that's my understanding, as well as there's multiple forms of representation on Penn and Zoning committee, including somebody who owns the restaurant downtown. So yes, some, not all, but yes, some.
But as far as us dropping or changing, amending the pilot program or the ordinance to potentially erase those no parking zones, have been no, no discussion about what the existing restaurants would think about that?
So I just want to speak to timeline on that, council member Peterson, the last meeting was two weeks ago and in order for Zach to have time to review case law and for us to have the materials prepared for this meeting, we had six total days, so only four business days. So in that amount of time, we weren't able to talk to all the downed restaurants.
I'm not being critical by the way, I'm just trying to get around the ground, yeah.
However, I would like to say to any downtown business resident, stakeholder, business owner or restaurant that there are, there is a formalized channel for feedback already established through the mobile food vendor policy manual and even if you don't really do that, you can actually just contact me directly because that's going on the file too, so that is established formally.
Counsel, further questions for Jordan or for Zach? Okay, counsel, what we're going to do is dismiss Jordan and then we will have discussion among the council who are able to offer your opinion or your emotions for any of the ideas you might have, be able to at this time.
Thanks for the thumbs up, chief.
So counsel, I'd say my biggest thing is just that it seems like there's a heck of a lot running around in a circle trying to do something that would help a business owner be more productive or even tax dollars and so on. I think the biggest concern is making it where it's not going to cause any legal issues, which we've count, went over evidently within my absence and also a situation where it seems fair to everyone else. I mean, obviously, if we're willing to do this for one business owner or for another business owner, those to approach us and want the same done and see no reason why we wouldn't do it for them, so I'd be completely in favor of doing 5388 and moving forward and trying to help them out as soon as possible.
Well, I guess, I thought if we, I feel similarly that I feel like this is definitely a gesture we can easily make to accommodate the needs of a local business, but I am torn, I'm personally between 5388 and 89 because 5388 satisfies the immediate need that's been identified by a person who took the time to come here and share their thoughts, but I don't really want to have to come back and revisit it, so 5389 is a little bit tempting too, so anyway, those are my thoughts.
Last meeting, as the new person, I was put on the spot and I said stay the course, but they've all, all other restaurants have had the opportunity to speak during this comment period up to now and we have one that has come in and supports the 5388, so I'm leaning that way too.
And I have a bias of that, you know, the pilot program was well presented, I think well thought out and provides a pathway for a very considered process and, you know, I'm not sure abandoning that at this point is good policy either.
But none of the, just, but point of clarity, none of these three options abandon the pilot project, right? I mean?
Just amend.
They amend.
Amends the pilot project.
And we proceed through the pilot period of May and then would make a final decision by July. That's my understanding.
Right.
Right, okay.
And I mean, if this one amendment makes such a huge drastic change to this pilot program in this small town with as few as I've seen, I would be really surprised if it ruined our data gathering that much.
I will mention just, just a point of clarity, that we have had eight or nine pieces of public feedback, Jordan, correct me if that data point is wrong, from other people in the community and other business owners about the pilot program and that's data that we have just collected. So, I mean, there have not been any changes to the program based on that feedback, so I just want to point out that this isn't the only piece of feedback that we have received, it's just the only one that we have considered making an amendment to the ordinance for. So I just want to, you know, bring that forward because there have, there has been other feedback from other businesses to this. Which was the point of the pilot?
Well, maybe I'm missing something there, I don't understand, if we went with 5389 and I'm a vendor, I can park my food truck in front of any existing brick and mortar restaurant?
Any really any place.
Any.
Any place in downtown.
About standing there. Superstate, grand street.
Yeah, there's a couple spots.
And I can now potentially, I mean, I could park right in front of an existing restaurant and potentially take business away from them. I don't see how other restaurants are really going to be in favor of this. I mean, we haven't heard their feedback, but it seems like if I was a restaurant owner, I would be more concerned about that than be in favor of it and maybe I'm just?
I think that's kind of why I'm more of a 5388 and maybe the second version has it where it's a mix between the two. If you're going to park in front of another brick and mortar restaurant, you have to have some kind of vetting process or something, but that's for later, you know? And the immediate, I think, 5388 solves that issue because then you can't, you can't park in front of the Stude. You can only park in front of Farley's and anyone can park in front of one.
Right.
But that's the only one, so.
I guess I'm thinking if somebody put a food truck with Indian food in front of Swedish crown, crown rye, I'm not going to be like, wow, I was all hungry for Swedish meatball, but now I'm going for some Indian food. So I guess I just don't.
It's irrelevant.
Yeah, to me it is, because I'm like, I've already got my math set for something, so I'm not going to, I don't know.
Well, maybe it is, but if I'm just walking up and down Main Street and I'm a visitor to the town and that's the first thing I see, maybe I go there instead of it. I mean, I can see either example playing out.
So essentially, things are limited if we go with 88, just limited there and then if there's other feedback, that option is open.
It's an open forum.
Yeah, we're establishing precedent in terms of amending according to specific feedback. I don't have a problem with that, by the way, but I think it needs to be overturned.
I really don't know where I'm landing on this, but I'm concerned about, one, we have a pilot program that we all voted for and we're going to run for a year and we haven't even got through that process yet and we're going and sharing councilman Presley's view on that. Same time, we want to try to help the local businesses succeed, I mean, that's very important, but we pass ordinances all the time, not all the time, but regularly, that theoretically a particular business or a particular person could come in immediately and ask us to change it and continue. Developing an ordinance kind of piecemeal by the first person that comes in and says something doesn't seem quite the best way to set policy, I mean. I am concerned we did not have the opportunity to weigh in on, well, we might have had the opportunity, we could have gone with P and Z, but so we had the opportunity, we just didn't take the opportunity, I think, but as far as a group of businesses that were being impacted by this ordinance, I would prefer, if we're going to do anything, we just start over and make sure that everyone has a say in the matter because it was concerning when we had the conversation last week, or last meeting, that we were already saying, well, we can't put a food truck in front of one business, but it's okay that everybody else's business can have a food truck parked in front of their business whether they want to or not and so I just don't know what the businesses in the affected district think of this and how many, I guess my question I have is how many restaurants, even though we're talking about this, I don't know.
No, go ahead, Noel.
Well, I, I don't know how we get to that, but I would sure like whatever we do to make sure that the impacted businesses have some say in what we come up with.
I just want to, I mean, I would agree with you about we don't want to change an ordinance just every time somebody, you know, comes, but this is a pilot project. So I mean, to me, it's like, this is still within the spirit of the overall pilot. I mean, yes, it's a change to what we laid out for the pilot, but it's pretty, it's pretty still within the spirit of what we were trying to learn and then I think the things that you're describing are the things that we need to really dive in and tackle next March to July. We need to take all the data at that point, see what, all the comments that have been submitted and make our, you know, get the word out that we're doing that so that we pass the right ordinance in July, but to me, this request is within the spirit of the pilot project and it's kind of, I think it would be a shame to not include that piece into our evaluation of the pilot period, you know, what does it look like to have that food truck parked outside of Farley's versus just, you know, saying, you know, being rigid and keeping the pilot as it is now? That's my perspective.
So essentially, what you're saying here is that we're encouraging people to provide feedback now, amend the pilot project and process?
Well, I'm not encouraging anyone to, but I think we should, I don't think, to me, it's not unreasonable to take this action for the, I mean, will I regret it if somebody comes in every month between now and March? Yes, I will, I will, but I don't, I mean, and that's, but that's what has me a little tempted to vote for 5389. Let's just open it up and see what happens, but I guess I just don't think that's going to happen. We've had, we've had it on our agenda for two weeks, some folks have seen it, it's been on the news record, I mean, if it was going to fire more people up, I guess, I feel like they've had a month to speak up and it doesn't, I mean, it sounds like we had one person, but that sounds like it was it, so.
You could get caught up over the whole pilot program thing all night long if you wanted to, but the reality is.
We have, turns out three meetings in a row.
Right, if this was a regular, normal, run-of-the-mill ordinance, if we had somebody come in, put in this much effort, going through the proper channels, dealing with people, coming to multiple meetings, I could listen to them and hear them out if it was a regular ordinance, not a pilot ordinance, so even more reason for me to hear it out now and try to be helpful. I don't know at what point we want to try to pick which one to vote on, but I think that's, it seems like the second one's a little bit kind of near, but I think, I think 5388 serves the goals and is probably the most non detrimental.
Do you want to form that into a motion?
Wait a minute, 5388?
Yes.
Lonely limits food vending just to that south area of Farley's or just opens up those spots in addition to all the others?
That.
Okay.
It leaves all the other spots that are in front of restaurants restricted and it removes the restriction from the spots to the south of Farley's.
That's the way I read it, all right.
Mr. Schultz, would it be okay if I made a motion?
You certainly can. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 5388.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 5388.
Second.
And we have a second, so discussion on the motion. After three meetings, you're discussed now. I'm probably not ready to vote on, but.
Here's the thing, the world's not going to end either way, so.
Even after that.
Turns out, right.
Okay, the motion is to approve ordinance 5388, which is the more narrow change of the two changes and with that, we'll have a roll call vote.
Council member Scallan?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes.
Chris Lee?
No.
Here's that the tally is five affirmative and two against, so motion passes. Thank you, counsel. We will now move to, can we just have a clarification then? So now, the pilot project is amended with a new map, essentially just approved a new map.
Yep.
Right, and the pilot project will continue on, will continue to get feedback and will readdress this in March, starting in March for a four month period and so you will all be looking forward to that.
I know, it's going to be on the agenda every week from March to July, I just want to prepare myself.
So I guess for a reason I asked that, so before March, would it be who, us as a business community, to get together to talk about this and could we do it in cooperation with the city so we could hear some of the feedback you're getting or should we just create our own feedback or?
When you say we, what do you mean?
We, the business community.
So you're not talking about the body here today, you mean the like add-on?
Correct, or any, well, I would say any business affected by this, which would be any business that you could work with.
Well, it would always be beneficial for individuals who are impacted by ordinance to get together and become active in the process.
Yeah, I believe there is no question there will be more activity this time around as it should and so I would, it sounds as if businesses or anybody can make comments now, but in March, the pilot time period is over and it will be evaluated as necessary after that point, so. Okay, all right, thank you, counsel. We will move on to new business, item number 10, item A sewer rate calculation, ordinance number 5386. Call on David Hayer, finance man.
Can you talk to that, David?
Yeah, David Mayer, you can cancel, so ordinance 554574 adopted by city council in 2008 outlines parameters for connections and fees per section 46-366 of the Lindesford municipal code. It includes those for sewer rates. The ordinance was previously written states that average monthly water usage will be determined from the average actual meter reading taken from that contributor during the previous months of December, January, February, March. Confusing. Because user charges are billed the following month after such charges incurred, a practice has been in place from the prior to now for the entire duration of the ordinance, staff feels it's important that this fact be clearly stated in the ordinance so that it is more clear in how fees are calculated and billed. So basically with this, this is just a clarification, it does have to go through as amendment by. It does have to go through as an amendment, but it's not changing the way that we have billed sewer for the last 30-plus years. It is just stating it clearly in the ordinance so that you and I can read the ordinance and understand it and there being no question as far as what exactly is stated and how it is calculated. So Steph's recommendation is a motion to approve ordinance 5386 as written.
Bless your heart. This did not clarify anything for me. So, okay, so user charges shall be billed the following month after such charges incurred. What does that mean?
What are you reading that?
That's under clarification, addition to section 1 last sentence.
Okay, so basically what it's saying is, so our dead months are the months of November, December, January, February. In March, we will determine what your sewer rate is based off of the usage from those four months.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Can I take this down?
No, that was helpful, but.
When you water your garden in July, you're only going to.
Yeah, no, 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 I get all that. I get all that, but I just live the.
And so the user charge is not billed in any of those months. It is always billed, so that April is the first bill that it actually bills in. So we figure it in March and then it comes out on the April bill. But remember, the April bill is your March consumption.
So the prior ordinance.
You're making me cry, man.
The prior ordinance just ended with the word February. It said that, you know, it was calculated for the following months, November, December, January, February. By adding the sentence that says user charges shall be billed the following month after such charges incurred, it more clearly states that while those are the months that we're calculating, it's, they're billed the month after that.
Okay. So contributor is household?
Correct.
So is contributor the official language we use there or what word does that come in? You just were asking, you were saying to clarify. I was like, who, what the heck is going on here? Because I was reading contributor as like, well, we don't do it by the number of individuals in the house. Because I was like, well, if you rent and you have seven people living in the house, are you doing it by contributor? Like, how would you know? Anyway, I went down a whole rabbit hole, so.
We were trying not to change every word of the ordinance. We were just trying to change the words that were most.
My God, I turned everything into the food truck.
Okay.
And if I may, for whatever it's worth, the purpose of this ordinance isn't necessarily to clarify in the sense of making it easier to read, but I know some stuff, but it's meant to be less ambiguous. So two words in this ordinance are meant to not mean the same thing. Whereas the old ordinance, you could read two words to mean the same thing. And like we maybe had in the past, someone might reasonably interpret that and have questions up their bill. The purpose of this was so that it would make more sense that if we sat there and were able to look at it without it being 40 pages long, to be able to not have one word mean three or four things. So hopefully that kind of clarifies the purpose of the ordinance.
Yeah, no, but go forth and prosper. That is.
Essentially, we wanted the ordinance to match the policy and the process so that it was easier for David to explain when he's working with residents who are asking questions up their bill.
Okay, I hope it works.
Unless you would like to volunteer and come in.
Yeah, that would be great, and I would clarify everything.
Yeah, and you may recall, counsel, we had a gentleman that had come in several months ago and who I think he didn't understand, maybe hadn't read, but, you know, trying to clarify, is that correct? David, so, you know, we'll take this stab at it and hopefully that will help. So counsel, thank you, David. So counsel, is there a motion to approve ordinance 5386?
Seven.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? Seeing no questions on the motion, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Peterson?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. We'll move to item B, disorderly conduct code, ordinance number 5387. Call on our chief of police, Michael Davis, our director of public safety. Welcome.
City Mayor, council members. Hopefully this ordinance will be a little easier to go through as the other two. So the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities, 38th edition for 2022, which was adopted at the last council meeting under ordinance 5382, had included it in the section 6.6, which outlined the definition of criminal damage to property. And the section we're specifically relating would be section A, which states criminal damage to property is by means other than fire or explosives. And under one, it says knowingly damage, destroy, or defacing or substantially impairing the use of any property in which another has an interest without consent of such other person. What we're asking to do, as a result of some previous investigations throughout the years where we had individuals come into our town and throw eggs on people's property and other substances, they were able to clean them off in a timely manner, so it didn't create the damage, but it left us having to try to discuss with our city prosecutor at the time and get them to file that type of charge and receive a lot of pushback over the section not necessarily meeting what we were facing. So what we've done is we did some research with other communities, one in particular, Salina, who had the same issue, and we were asking to adopt basically what they did, and that is to add a subsection to the disorderly conduct section that will states willfully throwing, depositing, or placing any substance upon any property in which another has an interest without the consent of the other person, when such action does not constitute criminal damage to property. And what that does, it gives us a little bit more of a tool for the city prosecutor to hold that person accountable if we go that far. And so our recommendation is to approve a motion to approve ordinance number 5387, amending section 9.1 of the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities, edition 22, as previously adopted by the City of Lindesburg, Kansas. And with that, thank you. Questions?
Questions?
I have a question. Would this, could this be, I don't know, not expanded, but would this include, we had, before your time, we had a incident, I don't know, five years ago, where a couple of individuals used chalk to deface sidewalks on private property with hateful messages. There's nothing really, because it could be washed off. I think the same thing happened then. There really wasn't anything to arrest them for other than using poor judgment, but that's not against the law, unfortunately. But would this, would that type of thing be covered with this new ordinance?
It could potentially under the spirit of law, but as always, the city prosecutor would have the ultimate discretion on whether to pursue that or not. But it could give us the tools to be able to do that potentially.
I am a hypothetical, just for an act of it. All right, let's say Jim Bob's 19 years old, whatever happens, he throws some eggs at somebody's car, yada, yada, okay, and it falls under this. What would be the minimum and the maximum charge that person could have levied against them?
It's a Class C misdemeanor, which I think is something to the effect of like a $500 fine in a month in jail now.
As a maximum or as a minimum?
Those are maximums. And depending on the recidivism case, it could vary wildly from there. But if that's not exactly the min-max for a Class C violation, it's somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was a minimum, because I mean, you know, it can be weird for somebody to go to jail for a month for hanging a car, but, you know.
To speak on that, I will say the city prosecutor, as any prosecutor has, the discretion to offer a variety of different punishments, anything from potential probation and diversion to the maximum. They can also work things out into civil compromise and plead step out of court. So I mean, that really relies with the city prosecutor and the direction that they, along with the victim and potentially the defendant, would be able to sit down and discuss and come to. It just allows us, the police department, to have the tools. In the one instance we're talking about, I said an officer to Salina. We had multiple interviews and ended up going nowhere with it. So we spent a lot of time identifying, we get it and everything, but it didn't give us the teeth to move forward on it or that person.
You feel confident in the experiences that you've had, that this isn't going to be used in some weird situation like I'm hypothesizing it's going to be used?
No, I think we use great discretion. And we've had instances that, I can't remember which council member pointed out about the writing on the sidewalk. We had some stuff on the ban shelf and we didn't move forward with criminal charges on that one, given the age of the individual and stuff like that. So I think we take that into account, along with the victim's perspective, and we work with the city prosecutor, try and come up with what they feel is the most fairer method to follow the spirit of what you would be passing.
Seeing no further questions. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 5387.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 5387, amending section 9.1 of the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities, edition 2022, as previously adopted by the City of Lindesburg, Kansas. Questions on the motion? Seeing no questions. Now have our city clerk do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Bruce?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Roxy. We will now turn our attention to item C, bunker gear. And again, we'll call upon our police chief, Michael Davis, director of public safety.
Good evening again. For the benefit of our newest council members and our new council member, our department set up a plan several years ago to purchase bunker gear. Instead of one lump sum, of trying to replace them all, we tried to set it out so that the city didn't take the burden all at one time. And so we started replacing three sets every year, and that's what we budgeted for. So we're looking to do that this year for two that are already expired and for one that should be expiring this year. We originally budgeted $6,000 for the fiscal year. Unfortunately, with the rise in prices, none of the quotes that we got for the bunker gear came in at that amount. We did send out requesting four quotes from four different companies. We ended up getting two back. Two never responded to us. The lowest bid came from Ed Enville Equipment in the amount of $6,774.72. Bought the other one from the fire store, came in at over $10,497.75. So we're asking for a motion to approve the purchase of three sets of bunker gear from Ed Enville Equipment Company in the amount of $6,774.72. And with that, any questions?
Thank you, counsel. Questions for the chief?
Chief, there's a pretty good difference in price on these. You feel like the quotes are quoting Apple Staples and the equipment is essentially the same between the two or?
Our buyers just sent out the same specs for everybody.
Okay.
I can't explain unfortunately why one was so extravagantly higher than the other, especially when we didn't get any, two quotes from the other two companies. So I think it's, to my knowledge, it's Apple Staples.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion to approve this purchase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of three sets of bunker gear from Ed Enville Equipment Company in the amount of $6,774.72. Are there, is there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, have our city clerk please call, roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Next, we'll turn our attention to item D, replacement transformers. And we'll call on Chris Lindholm, our director of public works.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilmen. This was going to be kind of a boring subject, but after the explosion that happened, it's not so boring.
Did one of the transformers just blow up?
It's, yeah, it's right there. The electric department sent in a couple of transformers a while back for repair. These were damaged by rust caused from irrigation systems, and turned out they were beyond repair. So they will be needing to be completely replaced instead of remanufactured or refurbished. The cost of transformers has skyrocketed over the last couple of years. Due to supply chain issues, due to large build-out in other communities throughout the country, especially the southeast part of the country, transformers have been in demand. And one of the hardest parts for them to get is cases in which the transformers are put into and built. And that's what's wrong with the ones we have, is the cases. So there's been a lot of work going in to try and get that supply chain issue resolved. It's moving forward, I think, but it's still caused a tremendous increase in price. So these are two replacement transformers to add to inventory. And due to lengthy lead times, while they're not needed now, if they're not ordered and we run short of what we have, we're in a bad situation now. So we are simply looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the two replacement transformers from Midwest Electric Transformer Services for $14,190 plus tax.
Counselors, there are questions for Chris.
We don't need to double one of them, just give them.
Further questions? Seeing no questions. Thank you, Chris. I would entertain a motion to approve this purchase. We have a motion?
Second.
Motion?
The second.
I'm sorry, who was that second?
Second.
Oh, the second.
Are there questions on the motion?
I think we need it. We better hurry. Back in things, it's flying off the shelf, right?
Okay, motion is to approve the purchase of two replacement transformers from Midwest Electric Transformer Services for $14,190. We'll ask our city clerk to call, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Heel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gallant?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. We'll turn our attention to item E, wastewater treatment plant mixer repair. And again, call on our director of public works, Chris Lindholm.
Thank you. At the wastewater plant, with the 2010 upgrade that was done, some new basins were added for nutrient removal. Those basins are kept mixed by mixers that sit on mass down in the basin, and they just simply, they're big propellers and they keep things spinning and they keep all the solvent suspension. When in operation, those mixers are running 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So they get a lot of hours and it's not easy to say that they're not running in the most friendly environment, don't they? So they're subject to a lot of corrosion, a lot of bad things. When they get a leak on a seal, we have alarm systems that indicate that. Depending on what causes the leak, sometimes that leak happens pretty fast and it can cause damage pretty quick to the motors. The one that is bad now, got a lot of moisture in it, so it ruined the winding, so the motor has to be completely rewound and rebuilt. A few additional items replaced while it's there. So it's a little more costly and as with the transformers, everything has skyrocketed due to supply chain issues and all those other things that go along with it. These mixers were originally around $8,000. We checked on price a couple of years ago when we rebuilt one because it was. when we real quick rebuilt one, because it was starting to get to the point to be way out replacing it with a new or just rebuilding. A new one is $14,633. And that's up just $4,000 in the last couple of years. So again, very costly. Everything out of the wastewater plant from the upgrades is looking at a 12-year age now, so we're starting to see more and more of those. Even with upkeep and maintenance and all that, this is a hostile environment. So we are looking for a motion to approve the repair of a flight mixer from JCI Industries in the amount of $8,805.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris? Seeing no questions, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Um, council, I'd entertain a motion to approve the repair of a flight mixer by JCI Industries in the amount of $8,805. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our city clerk to please call the roll call vote.
Council member Gallant?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, council. Turn our attention to item number 11. Madam Administrator, we have need for an executive session.
We do not bear.
Thank you. Item 12, is there other business to come before the council this evening? Seeing no action. If I can just bring, seeing no.
Don't call me a wastewater treatment plant mixer instead of what you've been calling me. I continue to get people ask me about the solar panel issue in our town. And I know that we don't have that attitude, but the common theme is they keep saying, well, the city's anti-solar panels. And I keep saying, no, the city is not. We're just trying to do it the right way. But there's still a lot of, I don't know if it's even misinformation. I think lack of information or understanding in the community. I would just, I think it may be something we want to address in the city again, maybe as a group or, I don't know. But I, I don't know, half a dozen different people have talked to me about that. And I just don't know if it'd be something we could talk about sometime down the road, not tonight, obviously, but in a future month sometime.
Sure, and I, and thank you, and good suggestion, important topic. And we'll see if the administrator wants to chime in on this. But I know that they are working hard on diligently, and we are not, as you said, there, as you also expressed, anti-solar energy and, but, you know, it is a complex issue. And we are moving forward and doing it in the appropriate way. And I'm, I think, I, I watch as they are progressing and very pleased, but Madam Administrator, if you want to add, please do.
Certainly. So you all know this, but it takes an extraordinary, extraordinary amount of time and, and process to get through complicated issues like this. So especially when the technology is evolving at the rate as well as the legal landscape for it. So just in the last six weeks, six to eight weeks, we have had multiple meetings at the city level with staff. David, Lucas, Chris, and I traveled to Kansas City and met with the KMEA staff for four hours one day. I just spent three days in Wichita at the KMEA annual conference. I've met with KNU. And we spoke with the firm who did our electric rate study. And we are continuing to just work through issues and processes and policy and rates. And we want to be sure that we're doing everything the correct way. So it just takes a lot of time. So I would just ask the public to be patient with us as we work through it. You know, we're, we're at the mercy of everyone's schedules and ability to, to come together from various different agencies to work on this, talking to other cities about what's going on in their cities and, and trying to get some collaboration going so that we're doing the right things at the right time. So it can be frustrating, and we understand that. We know that people want to move ahead. But I commend the staff and the agencies who are supporting us and working through the issues. And we are working very hard to achieve success. So I just implore the public to be patient as we work through the process.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks a lot.
Corey, I will say one thing that would be important to you whenever we're dealing with anybody that's asking us about solar in town, is are they asking about grid tie system, a hybrid system, or an off-grid system? And that's part of what's made life so confusing in this, so.
Sure.
Do you have any questions on that?
That makes a huge difference as to the direction that they're going, what their expectations are.
And we've had the opportunity to meet with some residents as well who have had questions, and they've come in to visit with us. And we've appreciated the opportunity to do that and hear the issues that they're having so that we can better understand what we need to address in these conversations with these agencies and those who are making policy at the state level and even at the federal level. So it's, it's complicated, but we'll get there.
I had that part right. I told you it was not right.
That's exactly right.